Welcome to the December 5th meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Vice Mayor Madeline Skiles-Harris has our prayer and our pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. May we bow our heads, please? Dear Heavenly Father, we just come to you just to say thank you, Lord. Thank you for just being you. And thank you for blessing us with things that we take for granted like food, shelter, and clothes, relationships. We just cannot thank you enough. Thank you for bringing us through the holidays, Lord, with our families and our friends. And, Lord, we ask a special blessing on the ones that protect us day in and day out. We ask a special prayer on the teachers, Lord, that are teaching our children and a lot of them are raising our children. And we just pray for safety in our schools. And, Lord, as we get ready to handle the business of the city, we ask that you move in the midst and that we handle the business in order and pleasing in your sight. This is our prayer we ask in your darling son's name. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Skiles-Harris. All right, we'll move into our consent agenda. You have four items on the agenda.
I'll move for approval.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move into old business. You have the sewer allocation recommendations, second and final reading, water resources. This is ordinance 19047.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll move into new business. We have land use matters, amending the West Lawn PUD along Shore's Road planning. This, Mr. Blomley, and let me first start saying congratulations on your game this weekend.
Oh.
Mr. LaLance is not happy about that, and neither is Mr. Smotherman.
I was gonna say, I was not gonna bring it up out of respect for Mr. Smotherman, but we've already had some good days.
Now that you brought it up, you can just go ahead and gloat.
It's a no. What are we waiting on? No.
I was unaware until just this moment that Mr. LaLance was a Bama fan. Out of respect to the book of there.
War Eagle.
War Eagle. Thank you, Mr. Wade.
All right.
Used to it.
It's just a game. Let's move along.
That's true.
You're not a true Alabama fan, then.
Well, I'll start off by Sam War Eagle, and then I'll move on to the questions. Our first public hearing tonight is for an amendment to the West Lawn planned unit development, which is located at the intersection of Veterans Parkway and Shore's Road. The single-family residential portion of the development is almost all built out. D.R. Horton is working on the final section. Final section has been recorded, and houses are currently being constructed. One of the things that we noticed over the last couple of sections is that there were some discrepancies in the required buffer along Shore's Road that had been required back in 2007 when the PUD zoning was adopted by the city council. In our research in the city council meetings, in the minutes of the meetings, there didn't appear to be, it appeared to be that the buffer was offered, that it wasn't really something that was discussed a whole lot during the city council meeting. It was just offered at the very beginning. So it doesn't appear to have been a contentious part of the zoning plan. However, as they began working on the subdivision, they did not construct the buffer per the plan, and there was supposed to be a berm along Shore's Road, and that berm in certain areas was never constructed. And so what we're doing right now is we're holding certain lots from their final section, not allowing them to move forward with building permits until they amend their planned development to modify the buffering requirements along Shore's Road. But one of the things that was discussed at the Planning Commission public hearing, several people spoke, and they were actually in support of their request as long as they left the existing vegetation along Shore's Road in place. I believe there were a couple of people with that sentiment at the Planning Commission public hearing. Mr. Taylor will go over their plan in just a moment, but their goal is to keep the existing vegetation along Shore's Road and supplement it, but eliminate the berm because of some drainage ramifications that that would have for the development. So we did conduct a public hearing on this matter at the Planning Commission on September 4th. There was two or three people who spoke that night. However, the applicant in, with respect to the West Lawn subdivision and to the neighbors along Shore's Road, actually requested a deferral so that they could do some additional outreach to the neighbors in West Lawn and along Shore's Road. And so when it was brought back before the Planning Commission on October the 2nd, the Planning Commission voted to recommend the approval of this PUD amendment to the city council. It is for the two common areas that are shaded in light blue on the map in front of you. Now, I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor to come to the podium, and he has a brief PowerPoint presentation, kind of going through some of the specifics of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Matt Taylor from SCC. I'm accompanied by Mr. Matt Dowdell, as well as Will Santi from D.R. Horton, as well as Rob Mulchon from my office. We're here tonight to give you a very brief presentation over our request to amend this PUD. That's entirely related to the buffers along Shore's Road, as Mr. Blomley said. So really, whenever the original PUD was envisioned, there were three buffer areas. Two of those are highlighted here in yellow. Those are the areas that we're requesting to change. The third one is on the western entrance, which is to Section 5, and that one we're leaving the same. Actually, we've already constructed it, which is shown here. Here's some pictures of what we constructed. These pictures are dated a couple of months, so it's probably not quite as green or quite as many leaves today. It's a very nice entryway to the neighborhood, something I think our residents will like. Here's the original plan. As you can see, this location affects four to five houses that back up to Shore's Road. And essentially, there was gonna be a three-to-five-foot berm, and then we were gonna plant new material on top of that. So what we're requesting is to just eliminate the berm, leave the existing vegetation, and then add more vegetation to that. I think there's a couple of things the original PUD didn't envision. One of those would be the drainage requirements along the back of these lots before it reaches Shore's Road. And then, two, a 10-year pause because of the Great Recession. That 10 years allowed the vegetation to grow taller, wider, denser, and so it truly, I think, what we're proposing is a better plan than was originally proposed. And I think the residents here agree, based on our neighborhood meeting and their statements at Planning Commission. And here's just the plan that we were proposing. And then this is the other area. It's on the east side of West Lawn Boulevard, a similar situation. This has berms, and so we wanna keep the existing vegetation and add more vegetation. Same thing here. So these are some pictures. This is looking kinda down the drainage path. You see all the existing vegetation to the left, the existing homes to the right. Here, those are vice versa, homes to the left. This is looking toward Shore's Road from the back of one of the lots, and again, toward Shore's Road. We did host a neighborhood meeting, actually two. They were on the same night, though. One of those was the residents that live on the south side of Shore's Road, who I think have been very vocal at a couple of the public hearings, especially in regards to some of the Shore's Road realignment. And then we also hosted and invited anybody that touched where this buffer amendment was proposed. And so everybody that came was in favor of what we were proposing. They want the existing trees to stay. They don't wanna see each other. They don't wanna see the road, so we're happy to comply with their request. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after the hearing.
All right, any questions for Mr. Blomley?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. I'm a Kentucky fan, so I had nothing to do with that.
What do they say? Go Big Blue or something?
I'm glad that it's basketball seats.
Hey, just real quick. What'd you thought about that when they played their, what was the team that?
I've done forgot about that.
Evansville is who it was.
Yeah. Obviously, you've not forgotten about that.
Who owns the property where the vegetation is right now?
So the HOA, it's all in dedicated common space, and so they still own it. It will be, it's common area, and they will turn that over.
I mean, I guess the idea is it's all, I suspect it's all good, and I'm fine with it. Neighbors are good with it, I'm good with it, as long as there's no capability for somebody to go in there and cut down that vegetation that's there right now and do something different with it. I mean, we'll.
It will. So as soon as D.R. Horton is done with the development, it'll all be turned over to the HOA, and they will maintain it in perpetuity.
All right.
All right, we need to conduct a public hearing on this amendment. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, if you'll come to the podium, you'll have three minutes as an individual, five minutes representing a group. If you'll keep all your comments directed towards the council, and we will get those answered at the end of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider ordinance 190Z40.
I think this is a really good example of Mother Nature taking care of something over a 10-year period that would have probably taken us at least that long with new vegetation. And it to even consider going in and putting the berm in place means that you're going to destroy 10 years' worth of improvements to this property, and everybody likes the vegetation that's there. It can be enhanced in a few spots where it's a little bit thin, but this is a very good improvement to what the plan was. So unless there's any questions or comments, I would say I'll make the motion to approve ordinance 19OZ40.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we're gonna move into a plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property located on South Rutherford Boulevard. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. And while I'm pulling this up, I'm glad y'all did mention basketball, 'cause there was a team that made it to the final four last year, and that's currently undefeated and ranked number 14 in the nation. And in case you're wondering, that's Auburn, so.
Mr. Blomley, I will say, considering this is probably gonna be your last night, that they, they did have to hire a Tennessee coach to be able to get them to that point.
That's true. I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we stay off probation, so.
Okay.
Our second public hearing tonight is for an annexation and plan of services for property that's located along the north side of South Rutherford Boulevard. It's the property colored in the pinkish-orange-ish color on the map in front of you. It's actually the eastern half of property, parcel that was annexed back in, oh, gosh, I don't remember the year, but about seven or eight years ago, I believe, the eastern half was annexed of the Murphy property, which is here. So this is all actually one continuous parcel. The Murphy family has brought this annexation petition and plan of, and we've developed our plan of services. It'll be a relatively easy parcel to affect its annexation. As you can see, it's bordered on its northwest and south sides by the existing city limits. It's the completion of the annexation of a parcel that's already inside the city limits. Services can be extended to it. One item of note, MED did indicate that depending on what type of industrial development and their demand for services is, additional electric service may have to be extended to the property. A portion of that cost would be borne by the developer, but we won't know if that will need to be the case until we actually receive plans. It's staff's understanding that this is a speculative annexation and the companion rezoning that we'll discuss momentarily, that there are no current plans for development. The applicant just wishes to have the property brought into the city for the potential of future development, as it will benefit from city services. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As I mentioned, we have the plan of services before you. Two motions required, one for the annexation and one for the plan of services, and I'll give a separate presentation on the zoning request.
All right, we're gonna conduct a public hearing on the plan of services and annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider Resolution 19RPS41 for the plan of services.
So move.
Roll tide, I mean, second.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, Resolution 19RA41, and this is for the annexation.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Schreit, you'll please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now need to consider public hearing, excuse me, a public hearing to zone approximately 44.75 acres.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. This is the same property that we just considered for annexation. The applicants, the Murphy family, are requesting a zoning classification of GI, general industrial, simultaneous with annexation. The balance of the property that was annexed and zoned a number of years ago, you'll see to the west, is actually zone heavy industrial. So they're actually requesting general industrial for this eastern half of the property, which would be a slight decrease in intensity from the balance of the property. To the north of the subject property is common area held by the Saratoga Park Homeowners Association, and as well as the Forest Point subdivision, both of which are zoned RM16. To the north is zoned commercial highway. It's a dentist's office and a veterinarian's office, and there's commercial and industrial zoning to the west of the subject property along South Church Street, as well as the CSX railroad tracks. And there's heavy industrial zoning to the south of the subject property, on the south side of South Rutherford Boulevard, where Husky Trust is located, as well as, it used to be Southern Container, I forget the name of the company right now. But the applicant has requested to have this zone general industrial. The 2035 comprehensive plan calls for the property to be developed as light industrial. That was adopted back in 2017, before we even had a general industrial zoning classification. So what I can say about that is that it would permit a number of the uses that would be allowed in light industrial, but it would also permit additional uses kind of above and beyond what we would envision for light industrial. So it would be an instance where the city council needed to determine whether or not general industrial, which is a new zoning classification that wasn't envisioned with the 2035 plan, or wasn't identified as being compatible with light industrial or heavy industrial with either of those characters, because it didn't exist at the time. So this'll be an instance where the city council will need to determine whether or not the general industrial zone is appropriate for this property, and whether it's an appropriate instance to deviate from the comprehensive plan. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Brick Murphy is here, representing the Murphy family who has made this request.
All right, any questions for Mr. Blomley? All right. All right, seeing none, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this zoning request. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland, members of the city council. I'm Brick Murphy. On behalf of the applicant, my family, the Mary Kay Murphy family partnership, my uncle Bob Murphy is also present. We would just ask you to vote in favor of the application. We've had some communication with a neighbor who had some concerns about a beaver dam in there, in the property across the street, which is Saratoga's kind of wetlands area, and was concerned about it, and we're happy to work with her. And I told her I'd make a commitment tonight that we would give the city access or whomever to address the beavers if necessary, and we're happy to cooperate in a way that's needed and always are. So I told her I'd make that commitment, and I'm gonna stand by it. So I appreciate it. If you've got any questions for us, my uncle and I are here, and we just ask you to vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Anyone else wishing to speak for or against? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider on first reading ordinance 19OZ42.
Move for approval.
Excuse me, 19OZ41.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skiles-Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
All right, we'll now move to a plan of services, annexation, and zoning for property located along Joby Jackson Parkway and Elam Road. Mr. Blomley?
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. Next public hearing that we have is for an annexation and plan of services located along Elam Road and Joby Jackson Parkway. It's the blue area on the map before you. The Dempsey family has brought this property to us to be annexed into the city limits. Included in the property is a stretch of Elam Road, and it is the area, follow my blue line here, that goes all the way from Joby Jackson south to the southern boundaries of the property. We did bring that to the county road board a month or two ago, and they did consent to the annexation of that right-of-way. The overall acreage, including that right-of-way, is 297.5 acres. We did bring that to the county road board a month or two ago, and they did consent to the annexation of that right-of-way. The overall acreage, including that right-of-way, is 297.5 acres. The plan of services has been completed and is in your agenda materials. It does indicate that we can provide services to the subject property upon annexation and upon development. There is one single-family home on the property, but the majority of the property is undeveloped. Some of it's in the floodplain and the floodway. But I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing regarding this request.
All right. We'll need to hold a public hearing for the plan of services and annexation. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we'll consider resolution 19RPS42 for the plan of services.
I think it's, it would be helpful to mention the fact that with the development of this property, I think there'd be an opportunity to have a realignment of Butler Drive and Elam Road in the future. And I think that creates a much safer condition further from the intersection of the interstate ramps that currently exist. So this actually has an opportunity in the long range to have a real beneficial effect on that whole area.
Yes, sir. And that realignment is on our major transportation plan, and we would certainly make sure that whenever this property is developed, that our major transportation plan is implemented.
We already had the public hearing. It's all right, go. Yep. So we're looking for a motion for the plan of services.
So move. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now consider resolution 19RA42 for the annexation.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion second, Ms. Schreit.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll now look at or consider a public hearing to zone approximately 200.1 acres. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. You'll notice that the acreage is actually different in this request than the previous request. It's because a 90-acre chunk of the property, which is the area colored in maroon on the map before you, is actually, there's no companion zoning request. So that area closest to the railroad tracks and the subdivisions west of the railroad tracks would come into the city zoned RS15 and would effectively serve as somewhat of a buffer, especially a large portion of that area is in the floodplain and floodway. So the likelihood of that area developing in the future is relatively low. So they've left that area west of the river without a zoning request, so that it would serve as a buffer to those existing subdivisions. The remainder of the property they've requested to be zoned GI, general industrial simultaneous with annexation. As Mr. Smotherman mentioned, any development on this property would be subject to our major transportation plan, and we would expect to see the rerouting of Elam Road to get additional separation from the interchange. The 2035 comprehensive plan recommends that the property develop as, the area east of Elam Road is recommended to be developed as business park, which the way the 2035 plan identifies business park is more of a, kind of an office zoning, kind of office uses, an office park. And the area west of Elam Road is proposed, is recommended to be developed as light industrial. As I mentioned in the previous public hearing, the general industrial classification came along after the adoption of the 2035 plan. They've requested the entire 200 acres to be zoned as general industrial simultaneous with annexation. Prior to the public hearing, Mr. Matt Taylor would like to make a brief presentation on this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Good evening, again, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Blomley said, I'm Matt Taylor of SEC, accompanied by, tonight, by Mr. John Harney, who's representing Ms. Dempsey on this application. So I do have a brief presentation on Dempsey property and our request for the rezoning. As you can see, some of the surrounding uses in the area are largely dictated by the railroad. To the west of the railroad are more residential in nature. To the east are non-residential. You've got the golf course and Indian Hills subdivision, several, and Stevens Bend subdivision to the east or west of the railroad. And as you get to the east, you get molly, swan, perfect equipment, much more non-residential uses. The property itself is largely in pasture down around the floodplain, floodway areas. You've still got quite a bit of significant woods in those areas. And the property is bisected by Joby Jackson Parkway. The zonings reflect those uses in the area. In the 2035 plan, as Mr. Blomley says, a mix of business park and industrial. Our zoning request allows for both those plans to be implemented. Then the buffers that Mr. Blomley was talking about, we've intentionally not requested anything on the other side of the river to create these buffers, these natural buffers that'll stay in place. So as you can see, most of these are well over three football fields, approaching over five football fields away of where we would not touch. So access plan, Mr. Smotherman kind of beat me to this one, but Elam Road would be envisioned to be redeveloped, and at a minimum would be a three-lane curb and gutter sidewalk section. But the ultimate width would be dictated by the development plan here and traffic studies. We do anticipate that this is a likely signal candidate location in the future as well. So any development here would partner up and develop these road realignment plans. So I'll be happy to answer any questions now or after.
Any questions for Mr. Taylor? All right. Seeing none, we'll need to hold a public hearing for this zoning request for approximately 200.1 acres. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come to the podium. All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and will now consider ordinance 19OZ42.
So move. Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right. We're going to move to resolutions ADA transition plan for right-of-way and public facilities. And I'm going to apologize, I'm going to sneak out a little early for a basketball game that started 20 minutes ago, so I may be able to catch just a few minutes. And it's not the Auburn Tigers. Mr. Blomley.
We wasn't counting on your vote anyways. It's the other business, and we're going to take care of Matthew later on, so.
I'm fine with that.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. Don't take a person first.
The city's ADA transition plan has been completed.
See, buddy.
Klein-Switi performed the ADA evaluation for public facilities. The total cost is approximately $3.5 million in bringing buildings into compliance with current ADA requirements. The study included schools, parks, trailheads, and other city buildings. Wiser consultants performed the evaluation for the right-of-way. The total cost is approximately $19 million to remediate curb ramps, pedestrian signals, and sidewalks. Approvements to the public right-of-way are currently underway in conjunction with paving projects, as well as other ongoing projects. And both of these studies will be made available on the city's website. The primary funding source for the implementation of the ADA transition plan for buildings is from the CIP expenditure, with an estimate of about $233,000, not million, $1,000 per year. The primary funding source for the implementation of the ADA transition plan in public right-of-ways will come both from CIP and State Street Aid, with an estimate of about $1.2 million per year. Upon approval of this resolution, the city will comply with the final deadline required by T-DOT to provide a final ADA transition plan, along with a letter from the city certifying the plan has been completed. And with that, Mr. Holtz and I will answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments?
I move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Schreit, will you call the roll, please? Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item, Mr. Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility Outdoor Classroom.
Madam Vice Mayor and Council, I come to you tonight with the agenda item of the approval of an outdoor classroom building at the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. This was a competitively bid-out project that came in at, the contracted price originally was $398,000 and change on the amount of the contract, due to some very good value engineering done by Mr. Greg McKnight, working with the contractor and our architect. We brought that price down to $360,818 for the contract, with the total project budget, including a 5% contingency in place for the contract amount, is $403,868. The funding for this project will be drawn from 2018 CIP funds that have already been bonded for the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility, and staff recommends the approval.
Any questions or comments?
Was this in our CIP back during the budget process?
It's been in the CIP, I think, for a couple of years, actually.
Yeah, it was previously bonded in 2018.
Right.
It's part of the master plan for the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility. It's an outdoor classroom, restroom facility.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Mrs. Schreit, will you call the roll, please? Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Gee, folks, while you're up there, you might want to mention what you're going to be doing Sunday afternoon.
Well, hopefully, all of y'all are going to be doing Sunday afternoon, throwing candy at the Christmas parade. And so hopefully, y'all will be able to join us. We're going to, we have gotten, we have definitely secured enough candy this year that we will not run out when we approach the square.
Lots as much candy as we had last year, I hear.
Lots as much candy.
There you go.
We will have candy for the parade.
There you go.
Look forward to seeing everybody on Sunday.
Sounds great. Thank you.
They don't need any candy. Okay, licensing. Any permits?
We do. We have three applications for you to attend tonight. One is for an ownership change at 740 Northwest Broad Street. Another is an ownership change at 1006 Memorial Boulevard, and an ownership change at 2227 O'Fort Parkway. These are all restaurants that are becoming new restaurants, but we have had beer in those locations before. All three need to finish up their building codes, inspections, but otherwise, their applications are in order. And if you approve it tonight, we would not issue the permit until they've finished up with building codes.
So move. Second.
Mrs. Schreit, will you call the roll, please? Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Any board and commission?
Not tonight.
Payment of statements?
Not tonight.
And Mr. Tucker is going to handle the other business. We have one more item.
Yes, there's one more item of business.